See everybody here, all three of you. Uh, Tim, you do the invocation and Mike, will you do the pledge, please?
Let's pray. How do you have only Father, we come to you today thanking you, praising you for all you do for us. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to come and just conduct a portion of the county's business. Lord, we pray that everything that we say and do will be pleasing in your sight and according to your will, and I pray that you'll be pleased with our actions. In Jesus' most holy and precious name, I pray and ask it all. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, ain't about the smallest cry we've ever had, ain't it?
I've seen it like this before, but it was a long time ago, a long time ago. All right, we got a request to go into closed meeting. Mr. Tatum.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will motion to enter into a closed meeting in accordance with 2.23711A1, personnel discussion of appointments to county boards and commissions of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Ron, Ronnie, say ah.
Ah.
Supervisor Smith?
Aye.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, we'll go back into the room, back here where, uh...
Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Or supervisor.
...from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. Only such business matters as were identified in the motion of which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Need a second? Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, we've got some appointments. We'll take care of those and get some of this housekeeping done prior to the public hearing. For the Franklin County IDA, Marshal Jamison for the Blackwater District. You gonna make a motion for nominate him back in?
Sure. I'll make a motion nominate Marshal Jamison to continue serving on the IDA Board. Mr. Chairman?
Second. Second. Madam Clerk, you want a roll call vote on those or just a voice vote?
A roll call would be best.
Call vote, please.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, for Union Hall, Dennis Powell.
Yes, I'll make the nomination. Dennis Powell will be reappointed back.
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yep.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, for the Rocky Mount District, Sharon Tudor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Sharon Tudor. She'd like to serve again on the IDA Board.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yep.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, on the Recreation Committee, Union Hall, Brenda Perdue.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Brenda Perdue to go back on. She's a very able person and I really appreciate her.
All right, we need a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, on the Rec Commission, Blackwater District, Al Flora.
I'd like to make a motion to have Al Flora continue serving on the Recreation Commission for the county. Mr. Chairman?
Need us, and we got a second. Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, on the Southern Area for Agency of Aging, I talked to Ms. Alfred, she wants to go back on. I need a motion, please.
I move.
Need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, Southern Area Agency on Aging, Pauline Nickerson, Nickers...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Pauline Nicholson for that position, please.
Thank you. Need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, for the West Pete Mont Planning Commission, Mr. Tatum has expressed his desire to go back. I need a motion on that, please.
I will make that. Mr. Chairman?
Need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote?
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yeah.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. So, you gonna call. Madam Clerk, you gonna call. Somebody was gonna take care of David.
Yeah, I think there's no check with David.
You want to check?
Report back.
Okay, uh, Western Virginia Regional Jail Authority, a board member, I'm one. I'll go back on. You all want me to?
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote?
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, Mr. Tatum is an alternate member for the board. He wishes to go back. If somebody will make a nomination, please.
I will, Mr. Chairman.
I need a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yeah.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Okay, for staff member, Mr. Whitlow, Chris Whitlow, he's gonna go back. He's agreed to go back. We need a motion.
So move.
Need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, and one more for Western Virginia Regional Jail Authority. As an alternate for Mr. Whitlow, Brian Carter has agreed to go back. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote?
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, I think we got them all. If I didn't miss any, have I missed any? All right. All right, so we've gotten caught up on everything there. Our public hearing is advertised for six o'clock, so we'll go unless anybody's got anything. Any board members?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a quick statement?
Sure.
Um, I'd like to thank Janet Mitchell again for her service on the board as an interim appointment, for her dearly departed husband that served this county so admirably over many years. And I'd also like to congratulate Nick Mitchell for winning the Snow Creek seat this week, and we look forward to working with you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to echo that. Janet, I just want to say that it was an honor to work with Leland, and it was an honor and a pleasure to work with you as well. And to Nick, congratulations. I hope you know what you got yourself into, but looking forward to working with you as well.
Anyone else? I can only echo what the others have already said. Janet, I want you to know you've got a family here. If you ever need anything, don't hesitate. Nick, as we've already talked, good luck, and if you need anything, you call buddy. We've got good staff that'll be here to help you right through, and each one of these supervisors, you give us a call, we'll be right there for you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a recess until six o'clock, then we'll come back at six for the public hearing. Ooh, that thing's pretty loud. Everybody hear me, can't you? If any of you are here for the Planning Commission, we're gonna have a public hearing for the Willow Solar Siting Agreement. This is a public hearing for that. The Planning Commission is meeting around in Room B-75. If anybody's here for that, go down to hall and come right around, and that's there. But if you're here for the solar hearing, that's here in this room. All right, I have to, I want to make a statement prior to our meeting, and it's primarily for my fellow board members. I've talked with the county attorney, and he has assured me that there is no problem, but for matters of disclosure. In 2008, one of the property owners, where this solar fields are, one of the property owners was a campaign contributor of mine. The campaign, the property owner at that time had no clue that this was coming, neither did I, and I do not feel that there's a problem. The attorney says there's no problem, but I want to make it known to my fellow board members for disclosure purposes, and if there's either one of you that have a problem or are concerned and want me to recuse myself, I will, but I'm asking you to give me your answer if you think it's okay for me to go ahead and do the meeting and vote, or you want me to back out. But it was no way in 2008 that I knew this project was coming, and neither did that property owner. Nobody's saying anything. Does that mean for me to shut up and go on with the meeting? That's why everybody's shaking their head, yes. All right.
Don't put it in those terms, but go ahead. I wasn't gonna put it in those terms, but go ahead.
All right, but I feel better letting everybody know that there's no secrets here, and so that's what that was, that's about. All right, we getting ready to have the siting agreement public hearing for the Willow Solar out on Route 40. I'm gonna turn it over to staff to do the introductions. We've got a lot of folks here, and staff, Mr. Willow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Sandy comes to the podium, of course, the reason why we're here tonight is for the consideration of a siting agreement for Willow Solar LLC, Interjex US LLC, for that solar facility proposed, Mr. Chairman, as you noted, along Route 40 West. Of course, solar facilities in Virginia are really dictated and guided by the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Code of Virginia, where the General Assembly in 2020 made some various amendments to the Virginia State Code, specifically Section 15.22316.7, which really lays out the negotiations in terms of a siting agreement. This property, it should be made known that this property is in the non-zoned portions of Franklin County, so zoning does not necessarily apply, although, as we understand, and staff will be reviewing that, that the company is proposing to follow the various provisions of the county zoning ordinance that this board adopted back in July in terms of any mitigation and so forth components for this project. And so, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would ask Mr. Sandy to walk the board through the outline this evening of the project, and I understand representatives from Interjex Renewables are here this evening to also present the information.
All right, thank you, Mr. Whitlow and Chairman Thompson, and as Chris noted, there are some new regulations and some new things that the General Assembly have done relative to solar, and so I was just really gonna recap those quickly, kind of give you a little bit of background relative to some of those changes in the regulatory side of things, and then move into the reason for our public hearing tonight, which is the specific siting agreement for three specific properties in the non-zone portion in the Blue Ridge District of Franklin County. So, just a couple highlights, and we've been talking about this for probably about a year, as we've started talking about the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, and so this would be a little refresher for most of you, but some of the tools we have locally to review, regulate, approve slash deny utility-scale solar facilities in Virginia is the comprehensive plan. And so, 15.22232 is a section of the Virginia Code that requires public utilities and projects by public utilities to be reviewed for conformance with the county's comprehensive plan. The zoning ordinance is also a tool that is available to the local governing body. For us, that would only apply to those zoned areas, obviously, of the county, but the zoning ordinance is a tool that, under 15.22288.8, localities are allowed to require special use permits for solar projects. And so, as you recall, we recently adopted the zoning ordinance, and we made solar a special use permit in various districts. Another item that is relatively new to the code is a siting agreement, which is really the purpose of our discussion tonight, and this is found in Virginia Code, Section 15.22316.7, and it allows localities to negotiate a siting agreement for solar projects, for utility-scale solar projects. And then finally, another kind of newer item to the solar discussion that you've heard us discuss before is revenue sharing ordinance. And what this really does, under 58.12636, it authorizes locality to adopt an ordinance which specifically assesses a revenue value of $1,400 per megawatt for solar projects, and this would be in place of using the MNT tax that you typically would use to tax these type of developments. And so, those are kind of some of the tools that are available in the toolbox here for localities to use and rely on. And so, if, as many of you will recall, back in July, we amended our comprehensive plan to add some language relative to solar and renewable energy, not just solar, but, you know, that would include wind and other things as well. And we added some policies regarding those renewable energy things, and the objective was to minimize the impacts to view shed, as well as the county's natural agricultural scenic tourism and cultural resources. And then along with that, we included some strategies for siting these facilities within the county, and I've listed them here. Avoiding impact to farmland, including prime farmland and statewide significance. Solar facilities should be screened from all public rights away and adjacent properties. Not visually impact scenic and cultural resources. Promote sustainable building design and management practices to serve current and future generations. Assist local businesses to lower financial and regulatory risks and improve their economic, community, and environmental sustainability. Promote agro-voltaics for farmers to still use the areas where there might be a solar facility. And then, solar facilities should generally not be located within our designated growth areas. So, those are really the strategies that were adopted and incorporated into the comprehensive plan just a few months ago, back in July. Similarly, with the zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission and the board considered amendments to the county zoning ordinance specifically to utility-scale solar projects, and in July adopted some new regulations. And in that ordinance, it included requirements for the submittal of the application for a special use permit, because again, we did allow solar facilities in certain districts, but only by a special use permit that's approved by the board. And so, there are application requirements and things that you wanted to see as part of those applications that came before you. And then, there's specific requirements that get into things like setbacks and buffering, as well as decommissioning if the facility was to become abandoned. Then, moving on to siting agreements, so just a little more information on siting agreements. The code, the way the code is written, it says that any applicant for a solar project shall give to the host locality, which would be, in this case, would be Franklin County, written notice of the applicant's intent to locate in such locality and request a meeting. The applicant shall meet, discuss, and negotiate the siting agreement with the locality. The siting agreement may include terms and conditions, including the bulleted items here, which would be the mitigation of any impacts of such solar project, financial compensation to the host locality to address capital needs that are set out either in the CIP adopted by the locality, the current fiscal budget of the locality, or the fiscal fund balance policy adopted by the host locality. Or, the siting agreement could also provide assistance by the applicant in the deployment of broadband within the locality. Just a little more on siting agreements. The code goes on to say that if the parties agree to the siting agreement, the terms and conditions that the host locality, again, in this case Franklin County, shall schedule a public hearing for the purpose of considering that siting agreement. And so, that's kind of where we are tonight, is we have a draft siting agreement that's been negotiated and discussed, and we have scheduled a public hearing to receive public comment on that proposed siting agreement. If a majority of the quorum of the members of the governing body present at the public hearing approve the siting agreement, the siting agreement will then be executed by the chief executive officer, and the, in our case, we also have the county attorney review and sign, and then the applicants also sign that agreement. And then, just a final note is that an approval of the siting agreement by the governing body shall deem the solar project to be in substantial conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, if you remember earlier, I stated that 15.22232 review that's required for public utilities. The code has put in here that if you've gone through this process and had this negotiation process as part of the siting agreement, and you come to an approved siting agreement, that's deemed to be in conformance with your comprehensive plan. The final note, again, just some additional information on the revenue sharing. I mentioned before about the, if you adopt the ordinance, you can assess a revenue share of up to $1,400 per megawatt. There's a maximum amount, but then it can be increased every five years thereafter by 10%. And then, a locality can collect tax on solar by either revenue share ordinance or machinery and tools tax, but not both. So, you can't have both methods. And just a note there highlighted is Franklin County has not adopted the revenue share ordinance to date. Doesn't mean you can't adopt it in the future, but to date, that has not been adopted, and so, our method of taxing a solar facility at this point would be through the machinery and tools tax and any other approved method through the siting agreement. So, any questions on any of that before I move on to the specifics of this particular site and siting agreement that I could answer?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like for you, Steve, to explain for the benefit of the audience, if we vote no, what the next steps would be for this company, how they can still apply to the state, just so that the general public is aware. We really don't have the final say-so on this.
So, if the siting agreement was not approved, and the company wanted to continue to move forward with the proposed project on this property, they would still need to apply for conformance review with the comprehensive plan, which would go to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission would then review and decide, really, really basically an up or down on the proposal of whether or not it conformed with the county's comprehensive plan, which really, they would go back and rely on this terminology, the strategies, and the objectives that we had in the comprehensive plan to make that decision. At that point, their decision would be final unless the board decided to take up that decision. So, in the case that the board did not agree with the decision of the commission, then it would, the board could take it up and also review it. If the applicant was not in favor of whatever that decision was by either the Planning Commission or the board, that matter would then go to the circuit court for consideration, and that would really be the method that would be followed for that. And so, if I've missed something there or misspoke, Mr. Gwynn can jump in. There are some various approvals through the SEC, but I think the ultimate land use kind of approval really lies with the locality still, whether it's through the siting agreement zoning or the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
So, specific site that we're addressing tonight really is three properties that consist of about 150 acres. Our real estate records showed about 160. A more recent survey is about 150. So, you may hear the two different numbers pop out of my mouth from here and there, but it's approximately around 150 acres. So, just a little background on this, it is called the Willow Solar Project, and back in August, we received the written notice from Interjex Willow Solar LLC with their intent to locate a solar facility here in Franklin County. And so, stepping back a few minutes just to the siting agreement and what I discussed there is that's kind of what kicks off the process, if you will, for the discussions of the siting agreement. So, back in August, Willow submitted that request to us, and the indication was that they were looking to build a 12-megawatt solar generation facility located off of Route 40, about one mile west of the Route 40, Scuffling Hill Road, Six Mile Post Road intersection, and just kind of opposite of the intersection, Davis Mill Road and Route 40. The proposed facility is proposed on three parcels, and they're identified here with the ownership in parentheses next to those, and again, consisting of about 150 to 160 acres in the Blue Ridge election district. And as noted earlier, this is a non-zone portion of the county. So, the zoning ordinance and the zoning regulations do not apply in this particular area, and so, there was no need to apply for a special use permit from the company, so they made, you know, requests to start those negotiations for a siting agreement. We have scheduled that public hearing, part of that process, and that's why we're here this evening, and just, the code did require too, that when you do a siting agreement, that you do have to advertise the public hearing like you do for other land use matters, which for us means two consecutive weeks in the newspaper of general circulation, no more than 21, no less than five days prior to the hearing. And so, we followed that, done that, and then we've also sent notices to adjoining property owners to these parcels as well, to notify them of the intent of the public hearing and the intent of the proposed use of the property. So, again, just kind of a geographic map, geographic area just west of Rocky Mount here on Route 40, and specifically, the three parcels that are outlined here in the blue are the properties that we're talking about. This is Route 40 here. Six Mile Post is just off the top of the screen here. These are railroad tracks, so the backside of this property is actually bound by the railroad tracks. And then, there are some frontage parcels along Route 40, but as you can see with this parcel, some of these parcels do go all the way up to Route 40. So, again, the three parcels under consideration that are part of this siting agreement are these three parcels here totaling, you know, approximately 150 acres. We'll say of that 150 acres, I think it's 40 to 50 acres that will actually be in panels that will... that will actually have panels on them. So it's not the entire 150 acres. And you'll see the conceptual plan here in just a moment. Again, this is the same parcels outlined here in blue. What you will note is the railroad tracks here and back here, you can see what looks like some ball fields and so forth. That's actually Wade Park. That's actually the backside of Wade Park. So to get to Wade Park, you come off of Six Mile Post here, but just across the railroad tracks from this proposed project is our Wade Park facility. So again, this shows those three parcels. This conceptual plan outlines where the panels would be placed on the property. And that's what these areas are here. So it's kind of a gray, I'm not sure how it shows up on your screen, but kind of a gray looking area here, 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 these areas here. These dark black lines would be access roads to access the panel areas. And then these pink areas or orange or red, however they show up on your screen, are kind of protected areas, riparian areas along streams and things like that where there wouldn't be any solar panels placed. And again, the railroad tracks shown here across the back of the property, Route 40, shown here on the dash line here. And I won't get into too much of the specifics of the project itself. I'll let the folks from Willow and Interjects speak more to the specifics and some of the technical items related to the property. I will point out that there is a power line that runs through here that you can kind of see, whoops, sorry, that you can kind of see running through basically the middle of the property here. And that would be how they would connect this power generation to the grid through that power line. Just some discussion, the agreement has been discussed with county staff and with the folks from Willow Solar and Interjects and the legal counsel from both parties. The agreement does outline terms and conditions related to the development of the property, including mitigation of impacts and financial compensation to the county. If you recall, in our zoning ordinance, we do require that they hold a community meeting prior to the public hearings for a special use permit. Again, this isn't in a zoned area, but we did request that the company hold a community meeting. And they did in fact hold a community meeting on November 1st at the Pig River Community Center. They had about five citizens attend the meeting to ask questions about the project and ask questions of the developer. And I'll let Interjects speak more to that. You can, you might have more questions for them, but I think primarily concerns noted were revolved around property value impacts and possible groundwater contamination from the panels. So some of the details of the sighting agreement itself, the agreement provides for the project to comply with all the zoning ordinance provisions, including setbacks, buffering, and decommissioning, even though this is in a non-zoned area. So through the sighting agreement, the parties did agree that they would comply with those, with the criteria in our zoning ordinance. And just a couple of those highlights, that the panels will meet and comply with national environmental and product safety standards. There will be 150-foot setback from all external property lines and public rights away. And actually, this next one is actually an addition above and beyond our zoning ordinance is that no building or solar panel will be located within 300 feet of any off-site residential structure. So any residential structure not on those three parcels, the panels would need to be 300 feet or more from any one of those residential structures. Security fencing to be installed on the interior of the vegetative buffer. So there will be security fencing, chain link style fencing that will be there, but the intention is that that will be behind the vegetative buffer. And the vegetative buffer is required to be 30 feet wide and six-foot tall trees at planting. And there are some photo simulations that were included in your packet. And I think the Willow presentation will actually show those as well of what the buffer would be proposed to look like as it grows over the years. The agreement provides that the applicant will provide a decommissioning plan with a surety to ensure removal when the site becomes obsolete. Proper disposal is required outside of the county of any of the items coming from the site. The agreement provides that the applicant will provide a post-construction safety plan and that'll be part of the site plan approval. And that will be reviewed by public safety and the volunteer folks who would respond to this site. In addition, they've agreed, as requested, that they would do training opportunities with any of our public safety folks. If there's a need for that, they have agreed to provide that, provide materials, provide training as needed. Just some continued items, the agreement provides that the applicant will reimburse legal fees and consultant costs up to $50,000 as we go through the review of this project. The agreement provides for limitations on the hours and days of construction activities. So from our research and understanding, the site, probably the most noise that there would be with the site is during construction. And the most noise during construction is actually a process where they drive metal piles into the ground. And so it's a relatively short amount of time, but we did want to make sure that there were some expectations on when that could occur and when that could not occur. And so we have some stipulations in the agreement that outline when those activities can occur and the parameters from which they can occur. The agreement also provides that the applicant will provide annual valuation of taxable equipment to the Commissioner of Revenue. The agreement provides that the applicant will pay the higher of the two tax assessments. And so earlier I talked about machinery and tools tax or the revenue sharing. And I also mentioned that we have not adopted the revenue sharing, but this agreement says that the applicant will pay whichever one is higher in a given year. So Exhibit A of the agreement kind of outlines from year to year what the anticipated tax would be based on both M&amp;T and the revenue share. And so if you look through there, you'll see for a few years, it's better from one tax source. And then there's a year where it kind of switches over where it's more beneficial, if you will, to the county. And so the agreement says that whichever is more in a given year, that's the tax that will be paid to the county. And the agreement also provides for the applicant to make a one-time voluntary capital contribution to the county of $324,000. And that would be due at the time of site plan approval. And again, that's part of Exhibit A. That's part of the sighting agreement package. Staff has reviewed this and had lots of consultation with our legal counsel as well. And, you know, we feel that since this is in a non-zoned area and this sighting agreement does mitigate the potential impacts of the solar facility, primarily by ensuring that they'll meet all the requirements of our zoning ordinance, staff does request that the Board approve the proposed sighting agreement and authorize the county administrator and the county attorney to sign all the necessary documents to execute that agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions. The folks from Interjects Willow Solar are here. They have a presentation they'd like to share and provide you some of more of the technical information. They also have some resources with them to answer any more technical questions that you may have related to technology, the panels themselves, those sorts of things. But I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that I can before they come forward.
Has anybody got any questions for Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Sandy, can you just briefly, for the purpose of our audience and those that are in attendance, speak to the distinction between the zoned and unzoned areas as it relates to the approval process for solar farm applications?
Sure. So Franklin County is, to my knowledge, is the only county in the state that has partial zoning. So part of our county back in 1988, zoning was established for a portion of it, roughly the lakeside of the county. So really from Rocky Mount, Union Hall, West Lake, Hardy area, just in general terms. From Rocky Mountain 220 kind of to the east is our zoned area. And approximately, you know, the other half, maybe a little more than half of the county does not have any zoning restrictions or criteria placed upon it. So for those areas that have zoning, the process for a utility scale solar facility would be that they would come forward, make application for a special use permit. They would, there would be two public hearings, one before the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to this board. And this board would hold their own public hearing and then make a land use decision based on the criteria in the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. That would be a land use approval through a special use permit. Citing agreement could also be part of that as well. But what the sighting agreement does, the sighting agreement kind of supersedes the comprehensive plan review, whether it's in the zoned area or the non-zoned area of the county. And I hope I didn't confuse things more, but is that, you think that's?
Yeah, just, you know, with specific regard to the non-zoned areas, that the zoning ordinance does not-
Does not apply.
-apply to the unzoned areas of the county.
Correct.
So the process is very different and distinctive.
Correct.
Because there have been some questions in the general public since all of this surfaced, you know, about what it means to be in the unzoned area as it relates to the ordinance.
Right. And one of the things that we stressed with the applicant, and they were very accommodating and willing, was that for consistency really, for across the county, we really wanted to see that compliance with the zoning ordinance if possible. And they were very, very happy to do that and willing to do that. And have, the concept plan that they showed does comply with all those zoning requirements, even though technically they didn't have to as part of that process.
Thanks, Mr. Sandy.
Anyone else?
I have questions, Chairman. This is no exact attainment of this, but yet it does. In districts that do not have zoning, I was reading through about here about the district that is only considering home solar panels. Are we, if it's not zoned, do we still have authority in the building code to make sure that the home puts solar panels on the roof? And outside, we have a say-so on how it's done?
Yes, sir. So for rooftop solar, for like residential, we really don't regulate that in the zoning ordinance. That's a permitted use. But we do inspect all those through the building office, through the building official reviews those plans. Typically, those plans are drawn up by the, an engineer that's affiliated with that company. And then, you know, our inspections team will go out and review that and inspect that as well. And that's irregardless of whether it's in a zoned area or a non-zoned area. Same with these larger utility scale solar, they will still be inspected by our building department, whether they're in a non-zoned area or in a zoned area. It's just really that those zoning ordinance requirements and those required public hearings and the land use process just are not required in the unzoned part of the county.
I thank you, sir.
And I know this is really our first sighting agreement and really our first proposed utility scale solar in the county. So I'm happy to try to clarify whatever I can because I know it's been a lot for all of us to kind of absorb and kind of understand, you know, when it comes to these facilities.
Mr. Sandy, my understanding, if this board votes down the sighting agreement and requires the solar company to go before the Planning Commission, and if the Planning Commission, whatever they do, and if it still gets shot down, the solar company has the option then to take it before the Circuit Court. And if they do so, it's my understanding that if the court makes the decision, and from what I gather, all indication being an unzoned area, we have a weak chance of being able to stop that at that point. But if we do go through the court system, we lose any of the things that were agreed to in the sighting agreement as far as any pre-conceived ideas that, you know, that we agree on. Basically, if we don't pass a sighting agreement and if it has to go to court, then we can't make any demands or anything at that point.
I think the answer is probably yes to that, but I'd probably defer to Mr. Gwynn on that as far as, I think the court could probably order certain things to happen through their approval. But oftentimes, I think on these kind of things, they might just send it back to the locality to reconsider in some cases. But I'll let our legal counsel kind of address that question. I don't want to speak for what the court may or may not do.
Mr. Gwynn, are you comfortable answering this in open session or we need one closed session?
No, it's fine. Generally, in land use cases, courts are reluctant to, they order us to take the action. They can't take the action themselves. But once you're under the court order to take the action, you know, you got to take it. So basically, the order that would come out of it is if the court believed that we should approve it, that the Planning Commission should have approved it or whatever, the order is going to be to approve it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Sandy, on the deciding agreement on number two, on page six, number two, in the plans and studies, most specifically see decommissioning, decommissioning plan and surety, you go to 2.7, which is on page eight, the very top, the very first one, unless the project is owned by a public utility under the Commonwealth of Virginia. Can you explain that and tell us what that means, please?
Yes, sir. And I'll let Mr. Gwynn correct me if I do speak out of line. But I think what this is referring to is that if the project is owned by a public utility like American Electric Power, they would not necessarily have to do the decommissioning and provide the surety that would be required of other applicants like this particular applicant, Willow Solar. So I think for this particular sighting agreement, I think we could probably even strike that first part of that language. But this was taken directly from our zoning ordinance requirements. And so I think what that's really referring to is kind of an exception, if you will, for Dominion Power, American Electric Power in our case, not having to have that letter of credit or post that guarantee of surety for that decommissioning. And so in some cases, the actual power company will be kind of the owner of the utility scale solar. I think the closest example I can think of is in Campbell County where Apco did a facility there. And so again, in my opinion, this would exclude them from having to do that bonding requirement for decommissioning.
Okay. And in regards to the decommissioning cost estimate, do we know what the estimated cost of this project is and how much the decommissioning would be at today's figures?
I do not.
I read and understood how that it is periodically visited and it goes with inflation costs. I read all that. Do we have, do we know a starting figure?
I don't know that yet. I may let the folks from Interjects speak to that. What we will have is at the time of site plan approval, there'll have to be a decommissioning plan.
There'll have to be that.
There'll have to be that cost estimate developed at that point. But they might be able to give you some indication now of what those numbers look like.
Okay. Does that open up any more questions for anyone?
Just going back to your question, if I can, Mr. Chairman, is if it's okay with legal counsel, I'd suggest maybe we just take out that first, that very first section there and start number seven there, start with applicant shall provide. Just to clarify that, if that helps, we can make that amendment if that's the desire of the Board.
I mean, yeah, it can be made. I think that it's kind of hard to see into the future. You don't know that perhaps it could be sold to a, you know, a public utility.
True.
You don't know what's going to happen. So you kind of, you leave that in there because we don't know what's going to happen 30 years down the road.
Mr. Sandy, I'm fine with it being in there. I just wanted a clarification on why it's in there and what it meant.
Got you. But so in this particular case-
That's why I said to bring up anything with the rest of the board members. I was just wanting a clarification as to what it meant.
So in this particular case, there will be, there will have to be a guarantee for the decommissioning. So through a letter of credit or a bond or some sort of surety.
And then Mr. Gwynn brought up something else there, and I think that was also addressed in here. If it sold during its lifetime, these rules still apply.
That's correct.
Yeah. I read that in there too. I read that in there, too.
I have.
I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Sandy, on page eleven, number three, no obligation to develop, I was, I'm just seeking some clarification where it says the applicant has no obligation to develop or construct the project, and it's subject to regulatory availability and cost of equipment financing. Is there any type of clarification that needs, is this once construction has begun? Or is it pre-construction? Or are there any parameters around that statement?
Well, the, you know, it's all well and good if they get approval here, but if they don't get approval, it's State Corporation Commission, then there's not going to be a project. So that tells us that even though this has gone on, that they're not necessarily going to be bound to build it. You could envision a situation, you know, I don't want to get too dramatic, but you can imagine a situation where maybe the economic feasibility changes in a year before they started work. If they start work and then decide they're not going to do it, and they have a decommissioning obligation, they've got to return it back to the way it was before. So that, you know, it doesn't change, once they've made changes there, they have to come back. It has to go back.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sandy, doesn't appear to be any more questions. Does somebody here from?
Yep, I'm not sure who's.
Interjects?
Who's going to come first, but let me see if I can pull up. Can you do it?
Yeah, I can do it. Want to give me control?
Oh, I got it. It's this one right here?
Yeah, that's the one. You'll have to make it into a full screen.
There was a famous line of Italian.
All right, help me out here.
I can't control it while you're controlling it.
Oh. All right. I'll let you drive.
Ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eliana Guinness, and I'm the project developer for Willow Solar. Willow Solar is owned by Energix, and we are headquartered in Arlington, Virginia. We have eight operational projects, six more under construction in 2022, and many more in development. Energix is a long-term partner for the communities in which we operate. We cite, develop, construct, own and operate projects throughout their entire life cycle, which makes us a reliable partner and a unique partner in the market. We are committed to, committed to strengthening the U.S. economy, and we source our equipment in the U.S., namely from our, namely from First Solar, who we have a partnership, who we get all of our panels from. Willow Solar is located northeast of the intersection of Franklin Street and Davis Mill Road. It is on three separate parcels, all in the unzoned portion of the county. About forty-two acres are proposed for solar specifically, and about a hundred and five of acres will be remaining, and these will be used for setbacks, vegetative buffers, pollinator plants, wetland protection, and historic and cultural resource protection areas. There are no listed historic sites on this project. There is the Hall and Cemetery, and this is excluded from the project area. Willow Solar will have a capacity of twelve megabots, which is enough to power approximately twenty-two hundred homes. The project will not generate any pollution, noise, traffic after construction, and it won't place any strain on existing infrastructure like schools, roads, water, or sewer. Willow Solar will deliver tax benefits and a voluntary financial contribution to Franklin County, which will total approximately one point seven million dollars over the life of the project. The project will provide a boost to the local economy by creating approximately fifty well-paying construction jobs. Energix is also a member of the Smith Mountain Lake Chamber of Commerce, and we will prioritize hiring local contractors for the construction, operation, and maintenance of Willow Solar. Willow will deliver significant economic and tax benefits to Franklin County and ongoing tax revenue payments and boosting local businesses while requiring no investments from the county. Through our sighting agreement, Willow Solar will pay Franklin County the greater of the machinery and tools tax model or revenue share annually. Most of the time, solar projects can opt in to one or the other, but we are agreeing to pay the greater of the two for any given year. Franklin County will also receive increased real estate taxes from Willow Solar due to the increased value of the land when solar is on it. So without solar on this land over thirty-five years, it would make approximately fifty thousand dollars, fifty-eight thousand dollars to the county. With Willow Solar and the financial contributions I have mentioned, there will be approximately one point seven million dollars to the county from this project. The project will be adhering to all setback and vegetation requirements that are in the zoning ordinance. We will be having at least a hundred and fifty-foot setbacks from all external property lines and public rights of way, and we are exceeding the ordinance by ensuring that no building or solar panel will be located within three hundred feet of an adjacent residence. The project is very well screened with existing mature vegetation, and we will retain thirty feet of existing vegetation where available. Where it isn't available, we will be planting thirty-foot buffer of existing vegetation, and this will be consisting of non-invasive and pollinator-friendly plants, shrubs, and Even though Willow Solar is in the unzoned portion of the county, we are voluntarily complying with all the requirements of the Franklin County zoning ordinance. There will be minimal lighting on the site. All project components will have a non-reflective finish or appearance. Pile driving will be limited to weekdays from eight AM to six PM, and all other construction will be limited to Monday through Saturday, seven AM to seven PM. Willow will be enclosed by security fencing at least eight feet in height and equipped with barbed wire, and it'll be on the interior of the vegetative buffer. All project infrastructure will comply with generally accepted national environmental protection and product safety standards. Willow will comply with all decommissioning requirements. The project exceeds setback requirements with three hundred foot setbacks from panels and adjacent residences, and Willow will comply with all the landscaping requirements by retaining at least thirty feet of existing vegetation and planting a thirty-foot landscape buffer where needed. The anticipated lifetime of a solar project is thirty-five years, and Willow will be placing a surety bond to the county to guarantee decommissioning. At the end of its lifetime, Willow Solar will be decommissioned, and all of its equipment will be removed and disconnected. This includes all modules, inverters, transformers, and wires. Our panel manufacturer, First Solar, has the only module recycling program in the U.S. and recovers up to ninety percent of materials. We will take all efforts to return the land to its pre-existing conditions after we remove all the equipment, and unlike many other types of development, once the project is decommissioned, the land will be suitable for other types of development, including its pre-solar uses. We have been communicating with the community for the past few months to educate them on this project. In September, we went door-to-door introducing the project to all adjoining neighbors, and on November first, we held a community meeting at the Pig River Community Center, and we mailed invitations to all adjoining residents, and we had about five people show up to that And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody got any questions for, we'll start on that end this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. What, what are the decommissioning costs approximately dollar-wise? And what dollar amount surety your company going to post, if you know?
Based on other projects we have done decommissioning plans for, and as Mr. Sandy mentioned, we will submit a decommissioning plan at site plan approval, but based on other ones we've done, it ranges from one million to three million dollars for this approximate size of the project. But cost estimates are able to be more determined as the design of the project is more mature and developed.
And what, what dollar amount the surety bond?
One second, my colleague can answer that.
Good evening, I'm.
Ma'am, state your name, please.
Dominika Sink. I'm with Energix. I'm the permitting director at Energix. So as my colleague has been explaining, usually the value of the bond for a project of this size ranges between one to three million dollars. That ranges dependent on how much equipment we have. So as she mentioned, that exact amount is based on the specifics of the design and the exact quantities of the equipment. And to ensure that you'll have visibility into that, that's why we propose to present this plan at site plan approval when we have the final site design.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else standing? Tommy?
Uh, my question is, the eight-foot-high fence, why is that necessary with barbed
That require, that's in the zoning ordinance, and so we were complying with the language in the zoning ordinance, but it's also, when the project is in operation, it's an active power plant, so it's important that not anybody can just enter and exit, so that's why there is fencing.
All right. What about the vegetation that's going to be growing in between these panels? How are you going to control it?
So we will have vegetation.
Vegetation, mm-hmm.
Thank you. We will have vegetation on the outside of the fence, so as I mentioned, that will be thirty feet. There is existing vegetation, but we also, under the panels, we plant pollinator species. So under the panels, it looks similar to a meadow, and it'll be mowed a few times a year to make sure that it is maintained, and we have an operation and maintenance team that ensures that the vegetation under the panels remains at an appropriate height.
My other question is the, if the lifetime's only thirty-five years, and you put in such an investment, there is no update to a project to continue it? Or that's just, it's just dead? As you said, the lifetime is thirty-five years, and then you're going to decommission it. But I believe if I was putting all this money into it, can a, can a solar panel be updated? Can it be continued process, or is that just it? It's just dead after thirty-five years?
Thank you. The technology that we use is very highly efficient, so the panels that we use, they degrade approximately zero point three percent every year. So after thirty-five years, that means the panels will be approximately eighty percent efficient, which is still very efficient for a rooftop solar installation, for example, but for a utility scale solar, that is the timeline of when our agreement to produce power will terminate.
So there is no update? You can't go back and just redo it and continue using the project?
At that time, we would have to revisit, and we would likely need to get another approval or another permit for the project.
Okay, how much lighting is going to be required on this?
There will be very minimal lighting on the project, and all our lights will be dark sky compliant, so they will face downward and not shine any excessive light into the surrounding neighborhood.
It'll shine inside the project instead of out? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good evening. I guess one concern that I have is water quality. What steps are you all taking to maintain and protect our water quality? And one reason, you're real close to the Pig River, which is one of our treasures here in Franklin County, and you're also close to a lot of residences. Just explain to us and the people here, the measures that you all are taking to ensure good quality of water.
Thank you for that question. The panel technology that we use, the thin film cadmium telluride technology has been tested in numerous conditions. The technology is insoluble within water, so there is nothing from the panels themselves that can enter the water system, and these have been tested by many different research institutions, including Virginia Tech, that show that even under, in a normal operating conditions and under extreme weather event, there's no risk to groundwater contamination.
He looks like he wants to say something.
You going to address the water issue?
Yeah, I can speak from a, from a different perspective as well, if that was what the gentleman was asking about.
Okay. Come forth, state your name here.
Good evening, my name is Sean Malo. I work with Kimley Horn and Associates. We're a civil engineering firm, working on many of Energix's projects. So we're very familiar with the erosion sediment control and stormwater requirements that are required for these projects. So we're used to designing these projects to meet not only the minimum standards, but we've been working with Energix to improve the erosion sediment control, measures that are installed during construction to elevate and create additional steps to remove erosion throughout the project before it gets to the typical erosion sediment control basins.
Okay, go ahead, keep going.
Okay. Yeah, I was just elaborating on how we're adding additional measures above and beyond the handbook that DEQ produces. We've been working with Energix to add other layers of protections throughout the project to increase the water quality during construction, and then we will meet all the DEQ requirements for quantity and quality for the duration of the project.
Okay. Also, these panels, we don't get a lot of hard hail storms around here, but we do get some every now and then. What happens if these, one of these panels gets cracked or damaged, or if someone, for a reason of a prank, decides to shoot one? Hunting season's coming up, we know how that goes.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So I can actually scroll down to a slide I have on that. So these panels have been tested over and over in extreme weather events and are meant to withstand, you know, tornadoes, hurricanes, any of that. But in the event that a panel is cracked, the site is monitored, and we have people that will frequently check on the site, but it's also monitored remotely. If the panel is no longer operational, operational, it'll be removed and either sent back to the manufacturer for solar, who has the ability to recycle panels, and if not, if it cannot be recycled, it will be disposed of by the manufacturer.
In the meantime, while this panel is getting replaced or taken away, is there a hazard to the environment by this panel being damaged?
There is no hazard to the environment even if these panels crack. An example that I like to share is there was a big tornado in the Mojave Desert that struck, and it impacted a solar project there. There were about eight point eight million panels, approximately a hundred and fifty-four thousand of them were damaged by the tornado. About a hundred and thirty-five thousand of those were sent back to the panel manufacturer and recycled, and the remaining were disposed. and recycled, and the remaining were disposed. And they did soil sampling and testing, and after, there was no record of contamination of the soil or groundwater.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions. Energix has been cited by the State Water Control Board in Buckingham with Phil and with counties with respect to sediment runoff. And there have been numerous fines and citations issued as a result of that. They went back out and continued to find violations. And I understand that Energix is currently facing another enforcement action of about sixty-eight thousand dollars in fines from DEQ in Withville. So my question is, what is Energix doing to mitigate the findings of, of these projects moving forward with this being our first project? And I would be very questionable about why the inspectors are coming back and finding additional violations. There seems to be something, I'm questioning, is it systemic? Is it something that you all discovered inadvertently? Or what is going, because that concerns me, as one of my colleagues just stated specifically, with respect to the proximity to the Pig River. Very concerning there. And we've, we've got location and geography issues through there that could end up causing, I mean, if you, if you look at what the EPA states about the degradation of quality of water, that this just can destroy drinking, destroys wildlife habitats and natural food chains, and it can lead to toxic algae blooms. All of these things could, you know, if these things feed into Smith Mountain Lake, we're done. So I really am quite concerned after reading these violations that have been cited by the State Water Control Board and wonder if you could comment on that.
Yes, thank you for raising this concern. I'm just gonna scroll up a little. So for Withville specifically, Energix hired a contractor who made mistakes in their process, which resulted in improper construction sequencing at the Withville project. And this is not something that Energix is proud of, but it was a mistake made by our contractor and we have assumed full responsibility for fixing this area, era, this error. Energix has been working with the town of Withville and the Department of Environmental Quality to remedy this issue and ensure the site is compliant. And we're still working to ensure the site is in compliance with all the regulations. And just more general note, so Energix, we've constructed and operated eight solar projects across Virginia, and we have six more in various stages of construction. And construction of any type brings the possibility for any stormwater management issues that are temporary, and this is true, just as true as it is for a single-family residence as it is for a utility-scale solar project. And we have never had any stormwater issues during the operational phase of the project. But some of the measures we're taking to ensure that this does not happen again is some of the stormwater measures that my, our engineer was speaking of, but using things like silt fences and diversion, diversion ditches, sediment traps in basins, and temporary and permanent soil stabilization, as well as retention ponds.
So do you all have inspections by the locality on the installation of the sediment traps and so forth? Who's double-backing on those compliance requirements?
Yeah, we see depending on the county itself, it depends whether you guys have your own inspectors. If you don't, DEQ typically inspects these projects as required by the law.
Okay. And obviously, my, my concern, I'm sorry. I'm very sensitive to some of these reports because I appreciate, and I know you all have been working, Energix is a good company. I've had a very good relationship with you guys since I met you, and I'm very proud of that. But we have, this is our first application. Once a mistake is made and once the damage is done, many of these damages cannot be easily walked back. And I am very, I know this board, we are very protective of our resources, our, our natural resources in Franklin County, and it scares me to death, quite frankly, that one misstep, one missed inspection component could lead to tragic consequences for this county. And I'm just looking, even to the extent that I'm not sure if we need to, you know, look at some renegotiating posture within the siding of agreement to work more closely with you all to understand how we can put protections further in place beyond what we've agreed to, to date.
Thank you. And DEQ is constantly, is constantly updating their stormwater regulations for solar projects, and we've been involved and working groups with them to stay on top of all their up, like, new regulations. And as our projects enter construction, we're making sure that we're not only abiding by those regulations, but going above and beyond to ensure that that doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Dominica, did you have something?
Yes, ma'am, if I could just add something. So we do have a provision in the siding agreement specifying that there be third-party costs that we will reimburse, and that's specifically for this purpose, to ensure that there's additional inspection, there's no hesitation from the county to feel like you're in control and have the visibility into what we do. But specifically, as Eliana mentioned, this is something that we've taken very seriously. So we have changed our internal procedures, we have changed how we operate. And as Mr. Malo mentioned, we not, not only follow the guidelines from DEQ, but we have started what we call over-designing the sites. So we go above and beyond with our design to ensure that we do not end up in similar situations.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How old is Energix?
Energix has been operating in the U.S. since 2019.
Since 2019? What is, well, you guys don't have a site older than three or four years old, do you?
We do not.
Okay. So you've never had to decommission anything or anywhere close to having to decommission one?
Correct.
Who finances Energix?
Energix is a, it's owned by Energix U.S. and its, its parent company is in Israel. And it's a publicly traded company on the Tel Aviv Stock Exchange.
Can you say that one more time?
Energix's parent company is in Israel, and it's a publicly traded company.
Okay. So ultimately, the revenue generated from the solar farms gonna ultimately go back to Israel is what you're telling me? If it's, if it's based out of Israel? I think she's doing just fine. I have no problem her answering my question.
Do you wanna answer?
If it's okay with you, I'm happy to answer that question.
Okay.
So the parent company is in Israel, and as Eliana mentioned, it's publicly traded. Our U.S. operations, we have staff in the U.S., we hire contractors in the U.S., we buy American-made equipment. So a lot of the impact that the company has is actually domestic. And that was the number-one objective for the company, being aware as the parent company is in Israel, starting to work in the U.S., making sure that we make the most impact on the American economy. That's why we're one of the few companies that predominantly use American-made equipment. We are exclusive partners with First Solar, who's the only American manufacturer of solar panels, to make sure that, that investment stays in the U.S.
But ultimately, a company out of Israel's gonna benefit as well?
Yes, the parent company.
That, that's all I was trying to get to. Thank you. You keep talking about this testing, and my biggest concern is, is, you know, even with electric vehicles, they haven't only, they've only been around for so long. You know, you know, you look at, I'll use them, like a Model T Ford, they're still on the road today. Electric vehicles in fifteen, twenty years will not be on the road again. They're just like solar farms. They're done, they're done, you get rid of them. You keep talking about this testing. How long or how old is this testing that you keep referring to?
So I'll speak a little bit to that, but we also have Karen on Zoom, who is from First Solar, who can speak to it. But this technology has been around for over twenty years. And there is a site in Golden, Colorado, that has been operating for over twenty years. And there's continuous testing there that have proven the efficiency and safety and reliability of these panels. But I'll, I'll let Karen speak to that as well.
So, but the, the sites for thirty-five, and there's no site older than twenty years old that we can even compare to?
Correct.
Correct, okay. I would love to hear what Karen has to say.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me, and apologies for not being able to be there in person. My name is Karen Drozdzak, and I am head of ESG and Sustainability at First Solar. We are the largest American solar manufacturer. And we have three manufacturing facilities in Ohio, and we're, we're planning to expand into the, the U.S. Southeast. So our, our technology is a mature technology. It has been in the field for more than twenty years. And it has been, or leading to institutions in the U.S. and internationally have confirmed the, the safety of our technology across its life cycle. So in, during normal operation, and also in the event of breakage, of fire, natural disasters, and then also end-of-life disposal. We're, we're proud to be the only global, the only solar manufacturer with in-house global recycling capabilities, and we're recycling our modules in, in Ohio. I also wanted to take the opportunity to answer some of the questions you had around groundwater and, and breakage. And it's important to understand, the safety of our technology is based on the fact that we're using very stable materials. So when you combine cadmium and tellurium together, it forms a compound that's insoluble in water. It has a very, very high melting and boiling point. And then on top of that, we're using a thin layer, so hence the name thin film. It's three percent the thickness of a human hair, to put that into perspective. And then it's encapsulated with an industrial encapsulate between two sheets of glass. And then in, in order to, to further ensure the techno, the technology's safety, rigorous testing is done to ensure that it lasts in the field for more than thirty years. So, you know, large hail is, is thrown at the modules and tested. We've got a nice video on YouTube that we can share, which shows how our, our technology is tested. And then, you know, further proving our, our technology's safety is the fact that it has been in the field. We have more than forty-five gigawatts of modules that have been sold worldwide. And last thing I wanna add is, in addition to the, the safety of our technology, we also have the, the, the environment, the, the leading environmental profile in the industry. We have the lowest carbon footprint. The, the benefit of Cadtell is that this is a uniquely American technology. It was developed here at our R&amp;D facilities in California and Ohio. And it enables us to be, to, to have no exposure to the Chinese polysilicon supply chains, which are facing allegations of forced labor.
Karen, may I ask you a question, please?
Yes, absolutely.
So everything keeps talking about thirty-five years, right? Did I just hear you correctly that you're doing everything you can do to assure that it will last thirty years? Is that what you just said in those last couple?
More, more than thirty years. And, and, you know, there, there are studies showing that modules have, have a lifetime of forty years or more, so that's really, you know, the, the average.
How, how, if there's no site older than twenty years, how can you guys know that it's gonna last forty years? I don't understand that.
So the site that was mentioned in Golden, Colorado, which is operated by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, is twenty-five years old. And I believe there, there may be some, some even older, you know, solar panel projects out there.
Okay. I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
How much funding are y'all getting from the federal government for this project?
We do not get funding from the federal government. We, we are constantly stay up to date on changes in policy on the federal level. And so when we do these negotiations with the county for our, for our financial contributions, we bake that into what we anticipate the federal policy changes will be.
My biggest concern right now is the decommissioning. You guys are saying one to three million dollars. I take it that you guys really have no idea what it's gonna cost to decommission a solar site, and I hope I don't offend you by saying that. But you guys haven't been long enough, and solar hasn't been long enough. We have no idea how long this is, and let's face it, if inflation keeps going, rate's going right now, who knows what it's gonna cost you guys to decommission this in thirty-five years? I think the performance bond is critical. So, you know, one to three million, I, I would, I'd times that by three, probably. Because I'm really concerned about the decommissioning of these solar projects. I'm concerned about a lot of things. So thank you guys for answering my questions. I really appreciate it. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Could I just address that?
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is exactly why we project five years ahead and update this every five years, 'cause you're absolutely right. You know, predicting thirty-five years, it doesn't give comfort to anybody. And we have projects that have been operational for a few years, and we have been doing these estimates on an ongoing basis.
And as part of the agreement, Mr. Mitchell, they have to update it and, and have to update their bond.
Thank you. Ms. Man?
I have one more question. I apologize. With regard to the condition of the soil at decommissioning, we're reading, we're talking about the soil being brought back to the condition that it was found pre-construction. How are you all determining pre-construction soil status? Are we, are you doing soil sampling? Is there some type of report? If a farmer sells and lease, well, leases his property to you, how do you make a determination about the state of the soil pre-construction?
Thank you for that question. We do not do soil testing, but solar projects are actually very good for the soil, especially agricultural land, because they let the agricultural land rest for the life of the project without the use of pesticides or fertilizer. So it allows the land to become more viable for agriculture after the project. In addition, we don't remove any of the soil. It's stockpiled and distributed, so nothing is drastically changing when it comes to the composition of the soil.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just raised a couple more questions. Karen, I'm Mike Carter. I'm the Rocky Mount District Supervisor. I'm curious, does your company, do you have sites existing in Europe at this time, like Germany or the Netherlands, and how long have they been in service?
Absolutely. We've got over five gigawatts installed in Europe. And in Berlin, Germany, actually, our modules have been installed on the city's water filtration facility. So our modules are helping to deliver clean water to the, the citizens of Berlin. Those projects were installed in, in the early two thousands, mid-two thousands. So they, they've been, they've been operating there for, for quite a while.
And I just have one other question. You mentioned cadmium. And I know in metallurgy, cadmium is a carcinogen. So that's concerning that that's in these panels. Can you talk a little further on that?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, you know, I understand your concern there. But what we're using is the compound cadmium telluride. So when you combine cadmium and tellurium, it forms a stable compound with different characteristics. uh, non, um, uh, metagenic, um, uh, compounds. So, so it's a, it's significantly safer than elemental cadmium.
Okay, thank you.
And may I just add to that? Um, one way that I like to think about it is thinking about like table salt, sodium and chlorine. Um, separately, they're very different. Um, chlorine is also considered poisonous, but when you combine it with sodium, it creates table salt, which as we know is perfectly fine.
Ma'am, uh, Karen, who I want to address my question to for right now, I apologize for using your first name, but I dare not tackle your last name.
It's Ukrainian. I don't blame you.
First Solar, what's the age of this company?
We were, we were founded in, uh, 1999 and we were, became a publicly traded company in 2002.
Are your ties also in Israel out of the country?
Nope. No, we are headquartered in Tempe, Arizona, and our manufacturing headquarters in the US are in, uh, Toledo or Perrysburg, Ohio. Um, and we're planning to expand into the, the US Southeast. So we've been i- investing in US manufacturing since the, the very beginning.
All right. And all these panels that were damaged during the storm that were taken to your plant for recycling, is that correct? Uh, there's no danger to the environment? Nothing leaked out on the grounds because I understood you to say that you didn't do soil sampling through that? The ground lay dormant for 35 years and it should heal itself? Or did I misunderstand something there?
There's, so i- in, in the event of breakage, uh, there, there have been a number of studies that have shown there are no concerns with it, with our technology. And, and that's due to the stability of the materials, its insolubility in water, and then also how it's encapsulated in our modules. So even, uh, when it breaks, it tends, our modules tend to crack, you know, similar to a windshield, a car windshield. Um, so, you know, the fragments remain, uh, close together.
If it's like a car windshield, they all, all stay there. Some come out. So there could be, there could be some damage there, correct?
Yeah. And even in the case of damage, uh, there, there have, studies have found that there are no concerns. There have also been worst case modeling done. So, you know, assuming everything was released, uh, into, into the groundwater, you know, what, what would be the, the concerns there? And they found, uh, that there were no concerns, that it would be, you know, uh, below the levels set by EPA for, for, uh, contaminants in drinking water. Then also to help put it into, uh, perspective, you know, that sort of worst case scenario, which is unlikely because, uh, it's encapsulated and, and stuck to the adhesive. Um, in that worst case scenario, it would be, you know, up to 4,000 times less than, you know, the cadmium that you have in, in typical fertilizers, which are directly deposited on the soil. So, you know, just to, just to put that into perspective for you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have one other question for Elena, please. Uh, we've worked this over pretty good, I think, for the, uh, uh, the damage and everything. My concern is this cemetery, is it an active cemetery? And will, any way will it be blocked egress and ingress if there's a funeral or something going on? Will everything be out of the way and be substantial parking for people to get in and everything? Nothing in the way?
Correct. There won't be. So our, um, the site control that we have for the land is, excludes this area. And, um, so it's, it, it won't be impacted in any way, including egress and ingress to the cemetery, even in the case of a funeral.
The fence won't bother them or anything?
No.
Does that have any more questions for, uh, I apologize for using first names, but Elena, uh, Karen, anyone else there? Yes.
I have one more question, just for, for full transparency for the community. It looks like the county over the period of this project's going to receive 1.7 million approximately. What are the landowners going to receive from your company?
We cannot disclose, um, the agreement we have with our landowners. Um, but the county, the money that the county will receive is obviously public information.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, is there anyone else here? I know you have your attorney with you and I'm sure that he wants to speak. But is there anyone else here that, uh, needs to speak to this project before the attorney comes?
Uh, no, no one else.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Mr. Foster?
Good evening. Scott Foster, Regentry Lock. I don't have a lot to add, but I will add one cleanup item that, that you brought up, Mr. Thompson. Uh, you were quest- you, you asked a question about confirming the current conditions of the site so that we could then bring it back to that status post-construction. And, uh, if you look on page seven of the siting agreement, reclamation plan requires us to document final answer for service conditions, including but not limited to grass, trees, cropland, pasture, including the status of onsite gravel roads, if such remain on the property. And then number three, the reclamation pl- plan must include provisions for the restoration and regeneration of soil and vegetation with a description of the pre-construction and desired post-construction conditions, including the productivity goals for agricultural viability. My recollection is correct. That's straight out of your ordinance. And those things will be required as part of the final site plan approval.
Yes, sir. I'm aware of that. I read this, but it's also on tape now.
Okay, good deal. Well, thank you. Y'all have any direct questions for me? Uh, great questions?
Got any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Elena, is there anyone else here with your company that wants to speak to this project?
I'm not at this moment, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stan, did you have anything else before we open the public hearing?
The only thing I would ask, uh, Mr. Chairman is maybe after the public comment is maybe they could speak more to the additional EMS and stormwater measures that they spoke about and, and provide some specificity there that maybe we could include into the siding agreement, some of those above minimum standards that they spoke to?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we'll do that. Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing now. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak, if you haven't already done so, you need to come over to the clerk and give her your name and your address and, uh, for verification. And then when you come forward, for matter of the record, I need you to state your name and your ad- complete address, not just Rocky Mount. Anyone here that is not a resident of Franklin County and lives here, then you're not going to get to speak for your three minutes. You have to be a resident of Franklin County. Madam Clerk, will you call the first person, please?
Samuel Robertson.
Come forward, Mr. Robertson. State your name and complete address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Samuel Robertson. I live in White County. Been here my whole life.
Come up here, sir, and talk into the mic, please.
Aight.
And give us your address.
Uh, it's, uh, PO Box 96, Works, Virginia.
Thank you.
I live down where the roundabout's going in and it's looking good. It's gonna be good for the county. I think the solar panels are great because the, the land will absorb more water. It won't be as much runoff. And right now, I love to go to Pig River, but there's a lot of coalie in there for runoff. And it's in my mountain lake, too. I can take you down to the lake and show you some coves. When the water's down, it's pure cow manure. And I'd be glad to do that. Now, I guess they've covered about everything I've said and I'm getting real nervous. I mean, that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm, I'm for the solar panels. I think it's a great thing.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Eastway. Now, wha- what he's trying to say, the e-
I need you to state your name, ma'am, and your address.
Iris Robertson.
Yes, ma'am. And your address?
4330, uh, Burton Chimley Road, Works, Virginia.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, what he's trying to say, the ecolastase on the bottom. Laura, you was asking about that. Okay, it's a cow manure and it fertilizes. Like the rain we're gonna get tomorrow, you're gonna have a big runoff. But as long as you don't have a rush of water, you don't have disturbance of that. It stays in the bottom of the rivers and then it goes into the lake. And where, uh, he, he could, could have took pictures of some of the lake. It was totally green all the way across it. In the upper, uh, right down from Dudley School. So that it's, it's in there now.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just has to be disturbed to, to show up at a water sample.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And, uh, everybody's gonna make the money from this. I mean, the county, EMS, everybody's gonna make money from this.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's a great thing. Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Blake Cox.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Blake Cox. Um, I'm with a nonprofit called Energy Right. I am not from Franken- Franklin County. I'm from Chesterfield, so.
Thank you for your concern, sir, but it's for Franklin County citizens.
Understand. Have a good night.
Madam Clerk?
Stephen Metters.
My name is Stephen Metters, 27 Barfoot West Route, Rocky Mount, Virginia. Mr. Chairman, honorable board members, thank you for letting me speak. I do own property next to this. I also own property that is set for the solar panels. At this time, the field where I use for corn, that's mainly where they want to put the solar panels. Now, I do use manure. I heard Mr. Robertson talk about it. Yes, you do have runoff from it. Maybe it does go to the rivers. I don't know. The solar panels, though, I think it's the safest way that we can ensure that we do continue to have electricity, not made from fossil fuels. And I'm hoping the board would see its way clear for that. We have to move forward or we have to find some other alternative source of energy. And I think with technology the way it is, that's all that we have right now. In 30 years from now, there may be some other kind of solar panels. And when they're talking about decommissioning, I want the board to make sure that it is done properly, like the panels either repurposed or recycled, not put in our landfills. Interjects has been great to work with. They really have. Everything I have asked, they have went above and beyond. And I hope they would do that with y'all. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have no additional speakers for this item.
Is there any, anyone else here that wishes to speak to this matter, uh, for the solar panels? And you're a resident of the county. Anyone else? La- come forward, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm, uh, Thomas L. James and my address is 3572 Franklin Street, Rocky Mount, Virginia.
Thank you, sir.
And I join this property. And matter of fact, it's right behind my house. And I've worked on this place for about four years and spent a lot of money and time and effort. And now they're putting 72,000 solar panels behind it. So, uh, I'm concerned about the value of my property now. I mean, it was, I could have sold it about six months ago for a lot of money. But now I'm concerned what, who is responsible for the value of that besides all the work I put into it. And another thing, my wheel comes right out from under these panels. All the water that I get to drink. And, you know, we got, I've got four grandkids and, you know, that we use it for our personal use all the time. From what I can understand, the research I've done on it, that it does cause thyroid cancer and it causes a lot of other problems. And I'm mostly concerned about water, the property. And I'm also concerned about the people that didn't show up here tonight that, you know, that, uh, probably don't understand. I've probably never seen a solar panel. You know, a lot of times, a lot of people haven't never seen that many solar panels. But you look out your back door and you got 72,000 and you spend all of that time and years fixing a place, then, you know, you've got something to think about. And we didn't get no warning on it. And if I had, I'd have sold that and left. But that's kind of what, we don't have any protection here in the county on that. And so somebody ought to think about the property owners right there, too, that's in front of it. I mean, I'm glad for my neighbor, and he's a nice guy, and all the others involved are nice people and they're making money. It's good. But somebody gets a shaft on the other end. So that's the biggest thing I got to say about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishes to speak to this, uh, matter? Anyone at all? All right, I'm closing the public hearing. I've been requested to take a 10-minute break. Ms. Guinness, does this, did this, did the public hearing bring anything else up that you wish to address? You or your staff?
Um, I can discuss the additional erosion sediment control measures if now's a good time to do that.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, yeah, I guess I just want to start with sort of the minimum or standard approach that the state requires us as engineers to follow when we're designing projects. And I guess to sum it up, generally it's to protect the perimeter of the project, right? We don't want erosion to leave our projects. Um, what we've realized with solar facilities are with the area that we are disturbing, it's important to protect measures upstream of those perimeters to limit maintenance, removal of sediment and risk from those measures failing or being problematic. Um, so some of the features, I'll just highlight three of them are more that we are doing. Um, the first one is to help protect the basins themselves. So we are designing ditches immediately upstream of the ponds, the sediment ponds that we have around the facility. So those ditches would be immediately at the top of the bank of the ponds as you go into the project. And as water runs off the project, normally that water would just run down the bank of the pond. And anyone who's probably been out to a construction site has noticed those banks erode and rill and do, and, um, just add more sediment to the sediment basin. So these ditches immediately upstream of the basins stop the water from going down the bank. And then we use those ditches to target a specific entry point into the pond that is stabilized with riprap or fleximat, which is sort of like a, a mat of concrete blocks sort of together, if you have seen that product. So that's one example of how we're adding another layer to protect another measure so that it operates as efficiently as possible. Um, the second one is probably more generally, probably seen these, the filter socks that are placed out on large sort of flat slopes. Um, filter socks help mitigate energy in the water as the sheet flow of water goes down large, flat slopes, which is typically what we have for solar projects because we want sort of a nice rolling hill, um, for the solar facility just to maintain, um, a, a smooth surface for maintenance long-term of the project. Um, so we're adding those into our projects as well. Um, so we're adding those into our projects as well. And then, where we don't have those flat slopes, and maybe we've got sort of a little bit of a rolling hill through the panel areas, we've noticed that those sort of low spots not only collect obviously concentrated water, but then those will erode as we're doing certain grading activities and things like that. So we're actually engineering ditches in those sort of concentrated points throughout the solar facility, so that as the water runs off and starts to concentrate in the panels, or even during construction, we've got a ditch that's designed specifically with a cross-section, sometimes we'll put some heavy-duty matting and check dams within that ditch inside, within the facility, to help slow down that water, capture that sediment inside the solar array area so that it doesn't get to that perimeter control, and we're just adding layer upon layer of those measures to help limit the transfer of sediment throughout the facility so that we can maintain the site in a more effective way. So those are just three measures, um, I won't go into more, just to turn this into an engineering lecture, but if you guys have any questions, be glad to answer more on that.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Guinness, you got anyone else that wants to address this? We've got a new player here. Did you state your name, sir, and your title?
Uh, good evening, my name's Richard Kirkland, uh, I'm an MAI state certified general appraiser. Um, I'm here to address the questions of property values around solar farms.
Are you, are you employed by, uh...
My, my firm is, was hired to do an impact analysis, um, by Energix. So, um, and this is a question I've been looking at for about fifteen years, I've been looking at this, um, I'm based out of Raleigh, North Carolina.
This project's been going on for fifteen years?
I've been looking at the question of solar farms and the pro- adjacent property value impacts for fifteen years, I have not been looking at this specific property. I've been looking at this question about property value impacts adjoining solar farms that long.
Okay.
I, I do impact analysis for a lot of different uses, I, I, you know, we look at schools, churches, soccer fields, we've done rock quarries, we've looked at, um, landfills, we, we do this type of analysis for a wide range of things. Solar farms is something we've been looking at for, like I said, for about fifteen years, in that time we've worked in twenty-eight states, including Virginia, so we've looked at a lot of other projects across the state. We've looked at over a thousand solar farms at this point. What we're looking for is first, we're quantifying what's around the solar farms, how close homes are to the solar panels, and what the mix of adjoining uses are around them, but primarily we're looking for sales of properties next to solar farms, once the solar farm's built, a home's next to it, it's sold, we want to see if there's any impact that we would attribute to that solar farm. You do that through what's called a paired sales analysis, this is, uh, accepted appraisal practice taught all across the country, it's the Appraisal Institute pushes it forward, um, and you use it anytime there's a difference in a property. When you're looking at one home that's got a garage and another one that doesn't, you do a paired sales analysis to figure out how much value to attribute to that garage. It's the same thing, we're just trying to figure out, instead of garage, we're trying to figure out what the va- adjustment would be for being next to a solar farm. Um, we've got a number of examples of this across Virginia, we've got them in a number of other states, again, I've worked in about twenty-eight states, um, but we've got a number of examples, um, including in Virginia, showing proximity to the solar farms is generally not having any kind of a negative impact. We've got over a hundred data points that we've pulled from those, we've got homes as close as a hundred feet to the nearest panel, and that, that home that is, um, in that example specifically, at a hundred feet, the closest one we've identified, that, that home was actually constructed and built brand-new next to an existing solar farm, so it was built, um, with that in there, in fact, a whole subdivision was developed right next to that solar farm. That was, that example again, was the most expensive home built in that subdivision, and it was the closest home to the solar panels. A good example of where we were looking at in Virginia though, would be Spotsylvania, there's a, a much larger project than this project, um, this one, um, pales compared to that one, it's a over, it's a five-hundred megawatt facility. We've got a number of homes that we've looked at in a community next door, they have homes that have been sold before the project was announced, we can pair sales that to sales, uh, resales after the solar farm was built, we've looked at new home construction out there, there's actually a number of new sections of that subdivision that's right there in the Spring Hill area, where they're putting in new lots, the lots are now selling for over a hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, they're, they're building seven hundred thousand dollar plus homes within two hundred feet of the, those panels. There is no sign of those being any different from the other homes with, without, that are not next to the solar farm in that community. Again, I've spoken to, uh, the developer involved, I've spoken to an investor who purchased lots from the original builder and basically flipped them, um, they're all saying that there's really been no impact on property value, in fact, values have been spiking over the last, um, few years. They did not attribute that to the solar farm, they just attribute that to the market and, you know, the activity that's been happening over the last few years. But the solar farm, they specifically cite as having no impact, and again, the data's supporting that. We've got a number of examples, and I've got an impact, uh, analysis report that shows these examples, and the, the, these findings are supported by university studies, um, there's a couple of major university studies I would cite, the first one is University of Texas out of Austin, they've done a, a two-part study, the first part was just identifying where solar farms are located, they, you know, unsurprisingly determined they were mostly located in rural areas, but the second part was where they did a survey of appraisers and assessors all over the country. Part of that survey, they asked, one of the questions they asked is, have you ever appraised anything next to a solar farm? And they found, uh, a wide range of impacts between two groups of appraisers, the appraisers who said that they had never appraised anything next to a solar farm, assumed and guessed that'd have large impacts. The appraisers who would actually appraise something next to a solar farm came in with an impacts ranging from about minus five percent to up to plus ten percent, suggesting it would be an enhancement. The conclusion that study and the researchers was that, again, the data set that came from the appraisers with experience was more, more reliable, and they, they concluded that they perceived no impact to a slight positive impact due to adjacency to a solar farm, and, and they had broken that up, looking at projects as much as a hundred megawatts, and in their analysis, when you look at the, the appraisers who said they did find an, an impact, that was when you would have a house that was one hundred feet from a one hundred megawatt facility with no landscaping in between. And I'll get back to that question about landscaping, um, because that is an important part of most of these solar projects that we've looked at. So what, the next study that we look at, and we hear a lot of, this comes out of the University of Rhode Island, they studied solar farms across Massachusetts and Rhode Island, they've looked at a, a wide, um, array of properties...
Sir, let me stop you here, do you have any knowledge of appraisals in the Commonwealth of Virginia?
Um, there is no studies that were done by the universities in this state that I can talk to you about, I can talk to you about the data sets that I have in Virginia.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. Chairman, that's what I wanted to know.
We're talking about the Commonwealth of Virginia, mostly Franklin County.
Sure, uh, and again, I, if you'd like, I can go through the specific examples I have beyond Spotsylvania, or, um, wha- whatever's your preference. I state the university...
Talk about Virginia.
Okay, well, fair enough. Other than the Spotsylvania example, where I've got multiple examples...
Mr. Chairman, I'll also interject, I'm a layperson in this regard, but looking at like rural areas versus compare, trying to compare us with an urban setting like Northern Virginia, um, it's, we've got to be looking at like localities.
I agree, I agree, that's what I'm talking about, not...
Sure.
The, the housing prices in Texas are not conducive to Franklin County, Virginia.
Sure, but that study out of Texas, the study was...
Now, I understand your tools and the way you do that are similar, but we're talking about Virginia, sir.
Right, and the, the study out of Texas, the, the, the researchers compiled that, but that was a survey of appraisers across the country, including appraisers out of Virginia.
Yes, sir.
So, some of those, some of that data set was from there. But, um, I've got matched pairs in Clark County, um, looked at home sales there next to that, that is a twenty-megawatt facility, was built in two thousand seventeen, and we've got a home sale adjoining that, sold for three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, and we've compared that to three other home sales that sold in the same time period, showed no i- impact in property value. We looked at another one that was out there, sold in two thousand seventeen, uh, it was sold for two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, again, it was a, a ranch, looked at other ranches in the area that sold in the same timeframe, and they're, um, actually sold, the property next to the solar farm sold at a premium over the other properties, it sold for over two hundred dollars a square foot, whereas the other properties were all selling for a hundred sixty to a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. So again, looked at, uh, Project in Barmsville, Virginia, and that one, I have a paired sale in there that I've looked at, but it's not a strong one because of a lot of, um, adjustments, but I did talk to the broker involved with it, and they specifically cited that they had no impact on the property value and the marketing of that project, um, so again, the broker interview, uh, su- supported a finding of no impact on property value. Looked at a project called Sapani Solar, this is in Sussex County, Virginia, um, a very rural site, looked at a property that's, um, again, this was actually a manufactured home that we looked at on six acres, it sold at prices very consistent with other manufactured homes in that area. Uh, then there's that example I gave you out of Spotsylvania in Pates County, and again, it was in a very rural area, they are, um, that, that facility was finished being built in two thousand twenty, so the data, sales data that I was referencing was in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one.
Sir, the adjoining county to us, Pennsylvania County, has several solar farms on them, do you have any data there in regards to the property values in Pennsylvania County?
What I've got for these, the, the trick with all these projects is you, after they've been built, I, there has to be a certain amount of time that passes for a property sale, like, you have to look, wait for a sale to actually happen. We've looked at solar farms, um, let's see, I don't have any specific ones that I've got pulled for that county, but, um, we do have some that we've looked at in the western part of Virginia, but again, I don't have sales of homes next to those that I was able to, uh, do specific analysis on, the, the areas and the counties that I was just referencing are the ones that I've identified in Virginia.
Thank you sir, any, any more? There was another question about landscaping, I think?
Well, and, and that was part of what I was saying as far as the landscaping goes, we, we, the data sets we're looking at, in order to look at areas, and you, the question about whether or not something is comparable or not, we look, at every solar farm we look at, we look at the demographics around that solar farm, so we can look at how, what the population density is, how many people are around it, what the, um, average, um, home price is in those areas, so that we can say that these are similar areas to where, um, your project is. So again, in rural areas, we're finding no impact on property value, we're finding that that is consistent with the data from these university studies that I won't go further into, but, um, it's also consistent with what the, um, I'm, I'm a member of the American Society of Farm Managers and Rural Appraisers, they're advocating solar is a great way of holding farmland for the future, because at the end of the project, the land will have laid fallow for a long period of time, it's a good way of diversifying family farms and farm income, and, um, as far as, I know there was a question earlier about seeing decommissioning, um, again, I was, um, I had a seminar in Ohio with a lady who did have part of her solar farm decommissioned, about twenty acres that was used for the lay-down area, went into gravel, they used it throughout the construction project, they pulled up all the gravel afterwards, they filtered out the, everything else, they, they uncompacted the soil, and it's back into, they're, they're planting it again now, so it's going back into farm production. So there are examples where they do go through that process. I, I can go into more detail about some other, uh, of these issues, but what we do see is that we expect that with any kind of, uh, impact on adjoining property value, it comes from what's called externalities. Externalities are the things that come off the property site. When we do identify impacts that come from some other use, it's going to be, um, the, the number one thing that would cause a negative impact on property value is hazardous material, anything that could get into the air, the water or the soil, does, we can, we can track and show those impacts when they are shown, um, but solar farms are consistently, the EPA studies out of the university, um, NC State University, Virginia, they're showing no impacts, um, due to, um, those environmental concerns, there's no, no normal operation of a solar farm does not have that characteristic. So we're not, that, that area of impact is just not a concern for solar farms. Coming down from that, the next large impact that you'd find would come from odor, and again, odor is, um, in my experience is more related with landfills, wastewater treatment plants, and poultry farms, um, uh, certain other agriculture uses could also have that. There's no odor issues related to a solar farm. Next, next area that would be the next level down from that would be noise, again, there's no, uh, noise impacts that comes off these solar farms, they're a very quiet neighbor, and at night they're completely, you know, not in operation and don't generate noise. Down from that, we get to stigma, which is normally associated with adult establishments and things of that nature, and the, the smallest category of impact that you get, that does, um, have something you would talk about with solar farms, is appearance, um, and that's what you'll most likely hear someone say, is they don't want to see it. And that's where we get into landscape screening and setbacks. A lot of the data set that we've got, a lot of the examples we have, including some of those in Virginia, we have pictures showing where you can see some distant pictures of solar panels, and they still don't have an impact on property value, but enough of a setback and a landscaping screen to filter that is an important part, to mitigate the appearance, and that's why we believe we're not finding any impacts when we look at the data.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, in your field of expertise, have you ever done any work with these natural gas pipelines and how that affects property values? An example like Mountain Valley Pipeline?
I, I've never worked on a large, um, pipeline facility like that, no sir.
Cause we heard some of these same scenarios with the Mountain Valley Pipeline and appraisal work, and it, uh, it didn't exactly pan out like the experts said, just curious, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you sir.
No, please, no.
Thank you.
Ms. Guinness, anyone? Uh, Mr. Foster, you've got something to add? You act like you're about to jump out of your seat, sir.
Yes, sir.
I want to give everybody an opportunity.
I think we're all, we're all good, thank you.
Alright. Mr. Sand- uh, Sandy, if you'll come back to the podium, please? Has the board got any more questions for Mr. Sandy in regards to this, uh...
I have one question that, that just popped up, and I don't know if Mr. Sandy can answer it, or one of these, uh, people can. These, uh, panels going at the Willow site, uh, we've visited some other sites where they rotate, with these panels at, at the Willow, are they rotating tight, or are they stationary? There was some question from some citizens earlier about the noise factor there.
These panels, um, are stationary, they will not rotate with the movement of the sun.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Sandy? Thank you sir.
Alright.
Appreciate it. Okay, board, we've got, uh, before I ask for the question, I want to make sure everything's clear for everybody. We can make a motion to approve, a motion to deny, or a motion to table. If we're gonna table it, we need to, uh, state the reasons for, for the table, and for anything, search, that we need staff to do. But before, uh, before I ask for the question, has anybody got any comment or anything they want to say? Mr. Taylor?
Well, for one thing, uh, for me personally, and no offense to, to these fine people, me personally, I, I don't like the farms because I think they're an eyesore, but that's me personally. Uh, I've spoken, I've done my own research, I've met with some of you at some of these sites, and I appreciate you taking your time to go with me out there to these different locations, and I've talked to some other experts in the electronics field, uh, that has, has experience working on these solar farms, and, uh, and they have assured me that they're safe, they're environmentally safe, they're health-friendly safe, uh, they're noise-friendly safe, um, in fact, he told me they're a lot, they're safer than these high-power overhead power lines going across the country. You know, like I said, for me, they're an eyesore, but I'm also a believer in property rights, and this is a non-zoned area, this, of the county, it happens to be in my district in Franklin County, that many years ago decided it did not want to be zoned. The people in my district decided many years ago that what went on on their property, they wanted to have the final say and not this board or planning commission, and I respect that. We have to, as a board here, we have to balance the property rights of the people that own this property, and those property rights of the people that are around there, and for me, I guess the best way to define where those rights stop is at the property line. I wouldn't want a solar farm in my front yard, and I can understand the plight of a lot of these people, and it gives me a lot of heartburn to see us losing, and I know that after the, the life, the thirty-five years that these solar farms probably improve the, the quality of the soil for future farming, but there's still some prime farmland that we're using, that we're losing for the next thirty-five or forty years, and, and I hate to lose prime, prime, farmland for that reason, and, you know, to, uh, I'll be straight up, I, I'm a har- hobby farmer, my dad and I, we do some farming, and, and I just, it, it kills me to see us... My dad and I, we do some farming, and, and I just, it, it kills me to see us losing this prime land. But I also know the plight of the farmers as well. I spoke with a farmer down in Pitt County a while back, and he used to run a dairy, and he said, you know, years ago, he said, I was profitable, raised my family running a dairy, but he said, the government and changing times and restrictions, he said, they run me out of business. And he said, this solar farm opportunity has been a godsend for him. He said, I'm too old to start a new business. He said, I would love to, he said, I've looked into getting into beef cattle. He said, I'm too old, and my sons are, they don't have the interest, and they're moving on. And he said, for him, this is, has been a godsend for him. So with that all said, like I said, I don't like the looks of them, but I know you, you're doing everything in your power to put up buffers and put up vegetative buffers and trying to screen it so we don't have to look at them. I saw some on the way to Myrtle Beach last week, and they're not great to look at, but it's not the end of the world either. But at the end of the day, I do respect the property owners. If they choose to put a solar farm on their property, that's where I, I'm going to be with. I appreciate the willingness of your company to work with the county on this proposed siting agreements with the setbacks that you have agreed to, that you've gone over, what any of our zoning ordinances had. I, I really appreciate your willingness to work with us, and, and for that reason, I, I, I just, I don't, right now, I could vote if we decide to, but that's just what I had to say.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I'd like to make a motion.
Anyone else wants to talk?
Mr. Carter?
Before we make a motion, I think it's incumbent on the board to consider our new Snow Creek representative, Mr. Nick Mitchell. And I would like to consider what he has to say before we make a final vote. That's just my opinion.
Anyone else?
I agree with Mr. Carter. I think, uh, he'd get here from Mr. Mitchell. He's, he's part of the process now, and I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, I can't put anything, I can't say anything any different from my two cents than what Mr. Tatum did. The property owners, they spoke years ago, back in the 80s, they didn't want zoning. I think the interjects in First Solar have gone above and beyond with the package that they have offered. I think they would be good stewards. And, and all of that, plus the folks of the Blue Ridge District did monzoning. And I respect you all for coming here for the siting agreement. And instead of, it really concerns me that if, if it's shot down and it goes before the circuit court, then y'all tell us you're going to build it anyway and not, we're not going to get this. That concerns me. But I'm also concerned about the other things that have been mentioned. So anyone else got anything to say? All right, I'm going to ask for the question.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table our decision on the proposed solar siting agreement for the reason of consideration of getting and providing additional potential language as it relates to soil and erosion sedimentation, and also for the purposes of bringing our new colleague, Mr. Mitchell, on board and part of this discussion.
Okay. All right, and your, and your motion was for, for what?
To table.
Understand that, but the reasoning was for soil?
Is to consider additional language in the siting agreement as it relates to soil and erosion sedimentation issues.
Anything in particular?
No, no, no more than that, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, anyone else? Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote on that, please. All right, we need, wait a minute, before we do that, it needs to be table till, when we going to table? We're going to make, we're going to do this in, in December or in November meeting?
November.
We need to have that in the motion, don't we? We're going to do it in November?
I, I would propose in my motion, Mr. Chairman, November.
Okay, you want to amend that to that?
Yes.
She wants to amend her motion to say that we will vote in November. Okay. That, Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote?
And us, just to clarify, I have a motion by Smith and seconded by Tatum. Did I hear that correctly?
Seconded by.
By Mr. Mitchell.
Okay. All right. Okay, let me go ahead and do a roll call. Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Kundif?
Yes.
Supervisor Janet Mitchell?
No.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for being here. We'll give our decision in, in December. Okay, we've got, I mean, November, November, I'm sorry. We'll give it in November. At our November meeting. November the 22nd. Okay. We have, we have here a legislative luncheon. It's the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. Now, I know we're closed tomorrow, but Mr. Whitlow's going to be here, and he needs to know tomorrow if anyone has an interest in going to that luncheon. It's November the 21st, 2022, between 12:00 and 2:00 PM. Can't go because of family reasons. But if you choose to go talk with Mr. Whitlow, no later than tomorrow. If you don't call him, that's an answer of, no, I'm not going. Okay? And we will have to, in our November meeting, we'll have to adopt our legislative priorities. Right now, only Ren Williams has accepted the RSVP to be here for the luncheon at our next meeting, so we will still have it at 12 o'clock with him there. And these agenda. We're still working on the agenda legislative priorities. There's a couple of things that needs to be tweaked on that. So that will be, you should get a copy of that in your Friday packet prior to that. Whitlow, I think I covered everything, didn't I? Do we need to, I happened to think about this, Mr. Carter's going, Mr. Carter's going to the Bayco meeting. It, we had to vote on the, Ms. Smith and myself to go for that. Do we need to vote on Mr. Carter so he can, if there's any vote, or is there anything so that he has the authority to vote and everything? Do we need to do that in there as well?
No, the form only had for two voting members.
Okay, well, you can have my slot. All right, thank you. All right, anything else? I want to make sure everybody gets it. All right, we will be adjourned until 12 o'clock on November the 22nd. We are not having our meeting next Tuesday because of the Bayco conference. Thank you.
1:30 on the 22nd, no broadband.
We going to meet with, with Ren in December? Okay. 1:30. See y'all.
See you.
Bye. Thank you.